It's Clark. We... I was thinking that you and I talked about having the board discuss financial information requests via email and how we would handle them differently than we currently handle it. Is that something I was going to say we could put on the discussion items? Should we be adding that to the agenda? So, the idea is that we've got taxpayers asking for information and it can be very complicated and we're trying to maybe funnel it in a more constructive manner or funnel the answer in a more constructive manner. Could I have a mo-- do I need a motion to change the agenda? Add to the agenda? So, I'm going to add C to the agenda. We're going to discuss how to handle financial information requests from community members in an open meeting. That's under discussion. Is there anything else? Yes, sir.
I would ask for a brief discussion on the resources.
Anybody else? I think she has a little bit. Just give the board member information so that we can all have it. So, is there any--
I'm not a member of the board.
Oh, Jay, geez, I'm hurled. Sorry. I thought you'd move. Never mind. Sorry, I looked over my eyes. Sorry, Jay.
That's right, yours.
Yes, those two. Do we have any public comment? Hi, Lou.
Hi. I've got nothing.
You've got nothing?
Nothing. I guess the chair, the chairman, who held this past Saturday, that was two days ago. Stephanie was there for most of it, for all of it, and then some.
Were you as exhausted as I was?
Yes. Yeah. Then I got in the car and drove to Pennsylvania, so.
I laid on the couch.
But we made just under $7,800. A lot of people came together and helped out and so, yeah, it's a big huge success.
Congrats. That all goes to the parent group.
The money is administered by the parent group and it funds enrichment grants and other requests that we get.
Is that a public comment?
Yes, it's a public comment. Nancy Ambrose, high school math teacher. I just participated in the band chorus trip over the weekend where we went to Boston and it was packed, the trip. The cultural experience that the kids got was, you can't even measure how much. We went to the Boston Symphony Orchestra. We went to the Museum of Fine Arts. We went to see the Blue Men. We went to Flutistry, which is owned by a past student, Adam Workman, who does work on flutes, fixing them, doing websites for people to design. He designs it. He does everything for these people and his group. He played for us with the three people that work with him and allowed the students to play with them, the flutes. I know I'm not saying that right.
Wow, that's actually--
Yes, I knew it was not what I was saying. It was just packed full of experience. We went to Salem. We went to a witch museum, which-- but just being walking around the colonial feel of Salem and they've all read The Crucible. They've all, I mean, they could really relate to that piece of it. I go back to the cuts. That is a piece that the music department does. They aren't paid extra for that. They do it every other year. It's extra time. The preparation for that is huge. I went two years ago. It was, again, the same type of trip. We had 80 kids, I think 13 adults, and it was a breeze. I didn't raise my voice once and I feel I'm a little more-- as a teacher, I, lots of times, will notice things and get tense about it. But this group did the school proud. It was a fun trip, cultural experience for some of these kids they'll never get. So, I just wanted to stress that. If we start taking away from the music department, this is a big experience for these kids that they may not get on any other opportunity. Thanks.
The music program field trips actually increased in budget from last year.
They did what?
The field trips for the music program actually increased between 15 budget and 16 budget.
With the teacher decrease?
Yes, that's true.
The band, which is very--
I was just going to say that we also got an award.
I understand that gold flutes, gold flute was played by one bar.
Yeah, my son just played a $60,000 song.
How many?
$60,000.
Whoa.
He texted me. "I just played a $60,000 gold flute."
You said Adam Workman? Is that what you said?
Yes.
And when did he graduate?
He graduated in 1998.
He's got something going on?
And as we were talking about the parent group earlier, Friends of Music does a lot to help fund that trip. Fund scholarships for students who can't afford to pay on their own, help with the buses, those sorts of things.
Yeah, we just paid-- We just paid a $1,000 bill that the school did, but the total bill was $4,500. So, the expenses must have-- they must have come as well.
Yeah, the trip, I think it cost close to $10 grand, about $10,000.
For all that, it's awesome. Amazing.
I'm actually sorry. Once they're done, I'd come up with a question, but only once Nancy and Christina are done. I'm just, I don't know what the last day of school is and you may not know either, but I am going to let all of you know that summer camps for kids are starting Monday, June 15th. So, when I had to call around to the elementary schools and the supervisory union to find out some scheduling issues related to soccer, I got one school that said, "Well, the last day of school might be the 12th. We're not quite sure." I had another school that said, "It might be the 15th. I'm not quite sure." So, I'm just throwing out to you that if it goes past the 12th, you all should expect that there will be students absent that following Monday because of the summer camps. And, you know, for a kid who's going to a week-long camp, they're not going to miss one or two days because school's in session. So, that's a heads up. It doesn't need it.
The last day of school is Tuesday to 16th.
Okay.
That's because of all the snow days that we have.
I understand. I know. We don't--
I find myself surprised that--
They're half-days.
Are they half-days at all schools?
Well, we have two more days to make up because of the steam days. So, I think you'll be okay.
Well, the elementary schools, are they finishing up on the 16th?
On the 12th.
Okay. Well, and just so, heads up for the, probably more the middle school than the high school kids, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laurie, I just want to say, the student reps, who Tia and Emily are here, Josh had a hard commitment to do with his team captain-- captaincy. And so, he asked me to make apologies for not being available. And I believe Tia and Emily are probably going to make an early exit because of some exam-type academic responsibilities.
You guys busy? What, for the year?
Well, April break coming up. The teachers will try to get along and stuff.
Okay.
So, we were going to have an educational presentation. I had asked, but it doesn't, it was too short a notice?
Well, actually, Stephanie--
Stephanie wants to do--
Yes.
Thank you.
We're there already?
Yes.
All right. So, I'm going to do, I'm going to talk a little bit about Capstone. We're in the thick of Capstone right now. It's third iteration. I printed off a variety of artifacts for you and I'll start them passing around. The first, the first five have the second document attached to the back. It's just a glitch with the copier. You just want to save that. And then, we will have to see. Lou's seen it from last year and so, Capstone started, this is its third iteration, second time around for Team Phoenix. They were the initial team that started it. It was interesting because the day that I shadowed after I was hired was the day they were doing their practice presentation. So, it was, I spent the day observing kids doing a practice presentation. It's been interesting to watch it grow over the three years and it has been revised in some significant ways. The first year of Capstone was, I think, its creation and its intent was to act as a summative evaluation of students' abilities in some specific ways, report writing, research, presentation, and, you know, all those important skills. I think they realized that the two years, we had students coming in without a lot of history in those areas and from seventh grade and through the first semester of eighth grade, not enough time for the students to learn those skills in order to be summatively evaluated on them. So, the second year and this year, it's become more and more sort of a unit and it's integrated in the classroom work. So, it's sort of, it's a Capstone unit, very specifically integrated in specific content areas. They do the research, for instance, in social studies and they spend two or three weeks doing research, learning research. They did presentations here in the library, learned about online research and different text-based research and all the responsibilities around citing sources and using evidence and-- The writing is done in the English class independently. Pansible products, which is a part of it, in addition to the thesis paper in the presentation, they have to create a product that supports their topic. Sometimes that's harder than you might imagine and it's something that's intended to be beyond just like the tri board sort of poster. They also do an oral presentation to an authentic audience of parents, their own parents, other, parents of other students in the group and teachers and community members. Last year, I remember the physics class, high school physics class came down because the student was doing a report on something that was pertinent to that. She was, she was really hammered with some questions and I was pleased to see that the student could really address the high school students' questions. It was pretty interesting. And so, and, you know, they're assessed on each part of that. And then, there's an exposition. Phoenix uses the exposition and everyone last year didn't do a sort of a gallery walk type of thing. But so, each team has its own flavor. In the three years, it's also grown into opportunities for students to learn those skills and practice those skills in seventh grade and eighth grade. So, both teams, as they've had seventh grades, have intentionally created opportunities for public speaking, for evidence writing and argument writing, developing thesis papers, all those little mini lessons. So, I think if that trickles down further to the elementary schools as part of their curriculum, it may someday be able to be sort of a summative evaluation of student skills. But right now, I think they're building their skills. They're learning how to do these things with this color name and very, very important opportunity to speak publicly and present. On the, sort of the spreadsheet-y sort of thing is a sample of some of the topics that students are doing. And it's not all students. They just sent a survey out because they're trying to group them by sort of like topics for the presentations. You're right in the middle of it. What are you hearing about it from home?
Well, my daughters are, you know, to hear with all their activities as far as getting ready for it. They're excited. Very, two very interesting topics they chose.
Uh-huh. Do you want to share them?
Yeah. One daughter, Richmond, chose teenage VCD and Sarah is working on G.A. GSA, thank you very much, in schools, support groups for harassment.
Yeah. Great. Yeah. The purpose of the paper is, it's a thesis paper. It's argument writing. The next artifact I will send out is Common Course Gate standards and I just copied those down so you can see it ties-- these are the eighth-grade standards around argument writing and speaking and listening. So, these are, these are elements, these are the latest iteration of standards and just fits right in with that.
Stephanie, what does L.C.E.A.F.?
Lead Clarifier Example Analysis. It's an acronym to incorporate evidence into a paper and to introduce like a quote or more something into a paper. And it's the, it's the model we use for it. And that's implemented all the way through the past six years. So, students are happy to say it's that degree. Argument writing and using evidence is the sort of the central idea in the Common Course Gate standards. So, it's not a narrative writing. It's not, it's really intended to ask students to take a stance, evaluate information, and then incorporate that in the defense of their own opinion on the subject. So, it's not, we're not emoting about this is how we feel about it. It is, this is what I believe is true and it's based on this particular evidence. So, that's the kind of writing that we're doing more and more in students so they can do that. It's hard to teach seventh, eighth graders to incorporate research, you know, into a paper. Many of us probably didn't do it until we went to college with grad school and students are doing that now. So, synthesizing ideas from multiple, multiple sources into one exam or one paper is a difficult concept. So, I, the last thing I'm going to say are the ninth PBGRs that we have. So, you can see, look, this is a tie-in to the PBGRs. It gives students an opportunity. It's not, they don't, not necessarily using the language of PBGRs, but you can see that they're all, they're all described there and it's allowing students to build the skills so that they will be able to show evidence of this before their, before their seniors. I would say the most important revision to the Capstone from the first year to this year are two things. They have, the students have Capstone advisors, Jay and I are tag teaming together for one small group of students. So, there's seven or eight adults in the building that meet weekly with the students. And it's not, it's a work group for students, but it's also an opportunity to reflect on the process and we start each Monday afternoon session with a reflection. How's it going? What do you need help with? Some pertinent prompts. And then, there are tasks. So, we're not, we're not, we're sort of guiding the students and mentoring the students, but most of the work is being done outside of this seminar. But it's a check-in, a weekly check-in. And so, that's, that's an important revision and I was, I filled in for some advisors last year and this year, the process has really tightened up and I think it's moving it forward. I think we're on the, maybe the fifth or sixth week, Jay?
At least, probably.
Yeah. We have about three more weeks to go. The other thing is that it's proficiency-based. The last, they were doing it sort of the first week in June, the very first year, because again, the idea was it was culminating presentation with the paper, intangible product and everything do, you know, near each other. And now, there's staggered due dates because it allows the students who are struggling with this, multiple opportunities for proficiency. They get to try again. Last year, some students had to do their oral presentations more than once, probably with a smaller group. But these kids get their drafts back, their papers back, and the rubrics are very specifically written so kids know where they need to improve their, their. So, we're, the goal is to get every single student to finish by the end of the year. And I think that's, that's the best, in my mind, that's the best revision that Capstone has undergone in the three years. And I'm excited to see how it, how it continues.
So, can I just make sure I understand what I heard? Every student in middle school participates?
Yes, in eighth.
In eighth.
Yes. Yeah. We do, we will build in a Capstone session into summer school if necessary. We had about six students the first year who participated. I was just coming on board and I remember meeting with them and I was on their, sort of their panel when they, when it came time to do their presentation. Last year, every single student finished and I think part of it is they had, it was scaffolding. The skill building was scaffolding and the process was scaffolding. So, we work with kids over and over again and that, that's true proficiency-based learning. And this year, I'm confident that every student finishes.
Come to the expo. It's pretty neat to see some of the stuff that gets here.
I think that's the other piece too, is just the fact, I mean, Richie mentioned the girls' topics and each student got to choose which topic they wanted to pursue so they could look at what they're interested in. So, we find that they're a little more motivated. It's still hard to write a paper, it's still hard to give a presentation, but they're a little more motivated to do it because it's something that they are truly interested in learning more about and making an argument for that kind of thing.
They're doing some authentic research too. There's a slew of surveys going around every day. Some students sending a Google survey. You have to gather opinion from their, from their classmates and from abroad or, you know, maybe you guys are even getting them. I don't know.
Some, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's kind of fun and then they take, they take some of the survey questions. You know, if you've ever done a survey, you know it's how you ask the question. But, you know, they're gathering that information and trying to make sense of it and that's a, that's a really important skill for these kids to learn.
I know that my AP Euro class went, last year, went down and sat and watched some of the presentations that they did at the end of the year. And I think we saw two. One was on basketball and improving like coach to participant relationships and the other one was about like the Big Bang Theory. So, and they did, it was two girls. They didn't pass their jobs.
When is the expo?
I don't, the other day, I don't know. I'll have to cut my head. It will be, I believe, yeah.
Did you just make sure that the board knows?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And the presentations will go throughout, I think, the week of May 11th, maybe?
Yeah. I think it's the same week of the morning meetings. That's why I was thinking that we could possibly have a couple presented if they're ready, but I want to say it's towards the end of that week, like the 14th, maybe? So, yeah, we can break it off.
Yeah. And we'll, you know, we'll invite you to the presentations too. You can be part of the, you know, the judging because there is a rubric that every, all members of the audience will actually assess students. And the students have had a hand in making their own rubrics for the tangible products. They, you know, they, they need to think about what criteria is important depending on their, on their, on their own product, whether it's a model or a video or something. So, one of our exercises was helping students develop the criteria. What makes a good whatever? And help them define--
Any questions?
No? I would imagine with two of them, have two of them being done at your house, they might be a little bit of a stress as the year, the end of the year.
Yes. Stentangeal product, both of them have been very stressful at that point.
My daughter was in the first year of it. It was stressful there.
As an advisor, I'm a little stressed. But stress is good.
Yeah. Hattie is also an advisor.
She is.
Which is, she's loving--
Yeah.
Okay. So, student reps. And you guys can leave them for after.
Yeah. So, spring sports are underway. There have been no games so far due to our little bit muddy weather, but hopefully all this sun will clear that up. We have the first boys' lacrosse game tomorrow. The first basketball and softball games are just Saturday and the first track meet is this Wednesday. Other than that, the NHS has been busy presenting their criteria and is just in a PowerPoint to all the morning meetings, all the freshman, sophomore, and junior morning meetings. Two or three members of NHS went around to morning meetings and just spoke about what we stand for, what our four pillars are, and what the criteria are to get into NHS. So, that was pretty busy last week. To piggyback on what Ms. Ambrose said, the band trip was awesome. I attended that. That was Thursday through this past Sunday, yesterday, and it was extremely amazing, tiring, but really great. Both the band and the chorus won gold and the band also took home a trophy for Most Outstanding Band. So, that was a really great outcome and everybody was really excited about that. Other than that, April vacation is next week. Everybody's pretty excited to be off early. And the seniors are working to go, each year, the senior class takes a trip to Camp Tecumseh in Jericho, Vermont, which is a camp, if you don't know about, for each summer for students who have previously or who have cancer.
South Hero.
South Hero. Oh, yeah. Whoops. And yeah, somewhere over there. And so, we're working on doing a day then the week after April vacation. And also, another thing that the senior class participates in is Back to Our Roots, which is when all of the seniors who went to an elementary school locally go back to their elementary school and sometimes Addison goes for a hike up Snake. Sometimes they just do activities with the kids, just kind of to be back in that setting and give back to where it all started a little bit. Yeah.
For juniors, we are going to take the S backs when we get back from April break, which I believe is still a pilot test this year, isn't it?
Less a pilot than last year.
Okay.
Fly your heart is.
Now, of course.
It was a test of the test last year.
Right.
This year, it is a test of student abilities. Depending on how the scores will be used.
And I believe we still sign.
Those will either be the week of the 11th or the week of the 18th. I'm working with Dana Lyman, the principal at Malabe, and trying to get some coordination there so it's not that it's going to impact the students going to the parent center.
It's currently the fourth quarter, third quarter closed last week. Scholarships are being filled out and deadlines are coming up for the seniors. I know Tia's been busy. And I don't know if any of you saw the recent article in the Addison Independent. The members, girls and boys state delegates have been selected. There were four boys and three girls. They're all juniors and we will be going from the 14th to the 19th of June for a eight-long kind of expedition, I guess, in government and political policy and learning about our state and how it's run down in BTC. So, I'm very, very excited.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who roles?
For girls, it is me, Julia Johnson, and Bailey Vissonette. And we applied. So, girls have the opportunity to apply and then we go in for an interview whereas boys are nominated. Here's Erin Gaines, Tyler Katebes. Nope, not Nate Raul.
Xavier.
Xavier Provancher.
And Josh.
There's one more.
Josh. Josh Sifferson.
Sorry, Josh. And I think all of them are--
Why is there a different kind of sense for boys and girls?
I don't know. It would make sense if you were able to--
I can tell you. Good. Thanks, Nancy.
The auxiliary choose the girls and the, and each group pays for it. The auxiliary pays or raises the money for the girls to go to Girls State and the, just the regular Legion members send the boys. And there's always been more boys than girls sent, which I've always had an issue about, but they have more money, I guess, so they send four boys and only three girls. And the boys are left up to the faculty, I believe, to vote on criteria, but we pick four and then they take the top four kids.
So, it's decided by the Legion, but that's the two ways that they're chosen.
That does make sense that the Legion itself has more money than the auxiliary. Thank you.
When I was in high school, it was more of an equivalent experience and it was pretty competitive if I went to a successful and there was, you know, the go-away, but it was, it was an equivalent experience for both for the girls.
I think there were three of us, about six girls, that applied this year. So, it'll be, we get to the economic office and I believe after Girls State, they tend to send to Girls Nation. But I don't know enough right now, but if the people who ever see it feel that it's accurate, representative of the state.
Laurie, about student reps, we, I solicited-- Lori, about student reps, we, I solicited interested students from the sophomore class. And I have two candidates who have submitted the required paperwork and I hope to have the reps on board for the main meeting.
Will we go two seniors and one junior? Is that where we're going with that?
We will, yeah, we have. Right. I don't know, you know, we rarely have all of them here. So it depends on, you know, there's, there's Fridays, the deadline for interesting candidates. So we'll see.
Wendy, they will be here with us at the main meeting?
I hope so.
Thank you. You guys, that's all? You all set?
Does anybody have any questions? Also, I don't know if you noticed, but the Aladdin play that's being played by the elementary school, Eva, my daughter's helping out to direct.
She is right now, I believe.
Yeah. My mom made a huge thing of baked ziti for her refrigerator. So it's a huge kind of a kitchen if I go home. But the play is open to the public Thursday night. Tickets will be on sale at the door for $3.
Seven?
Six o'clock.
Six, six. Yeah. And, yeah, the, I mean, these kids, for fifth and sixth graders, they put a lot of time and effort into it.
Thank you. So, the principal report.
Well, you got my it's down for it.
Yes.
It's in the packet?
It was sent this morning. We're going to try to get done earlier next time.
Yep. I can't, I don't remember when it went.
Let's see.
Thank you.
Hold on, I'll give you yours.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. So, any questions on, on water growth? We had a great time at the High School Design Conference, a lot of great ideas. We had an evacuation based on, you know, an accidental release of self-protection spray. Things went very smoothly. It was sunny, chilly, but sunny that day. We ended up, we ran outside as long as we thought we would be. The students reported on S-Back. We finished the seventh and eighth grade, although we're testing makeups. Jay, how are we doing with makeups?
Seventh grade is mostly done. Eighth grade just finished their testing last week. So we're in the process of figuring out when they're going to do those. Yeah, 11th grade is, starts the week after April break. Fortunately, we have about a month to a month and a half window for each grade. So there's plenty of time to do makeups.
The, the whole thing is a 12 week window. So, but there's, you know, you're, you're tested on things they're still learning. So it makes sense you want to look at that.
But we also did realize that we don't have the whole 12 weeks for seventh grade, actually that's through the beginning of May. So because they started earlier, they only have a certain amount of time that their window is open. But we can choose any length of week to start the test.
The seventh grade on the first day, the day we evacuated, they were in, they were tested. So they were, I think they were granted in the field.
Yeah. Well, all those students could start where they'd left off. The downside is they weren't able to go back. So if they had hoped to answer any questions before, they weren't actually able to do that. So they left them blank. They couldn't go back unfortunately. So it's unfortunate flaw in the system, but it protects them, you know, if they log out and they can go research the questions they've looked at and they come back. And so it allows them to, to take the test in multiple stages if that's what they need to do. But downside is not being able to go back.
So before you log out, you gotta answer.
Check, check all the work that you did previously.
Unless of course there's an emergency and then you just screw up.
I, I think that, you know, the intent was to be more integrated and good classroom work and that it is disruptive. In a lab setting like this, it's very disruptive to techno, to the rest of the program while a whole grade is tested. We're basically using every computer, every lab. So moving forward as we, as we incorporate more devices in the building, it'll be easier to test discrete groups of students and they can just, they can just go through and do that. The, the test is designed to be done flexible that way. It's cheaper. Kids can sit right next to each other. I walked through the lab and it was interesting. There were only two students that were used, that had the same question up because it's computer adaptive. So depending on how you answer, it will scale questions up or down depending on how well you do. So very quickly, it becomes differentiated for an entire class of students. So it was fun. There was, you know, I think maybe 24 computers in the middle school lab and only two students were on the same question. It was kind of cool. And then I included the, the draft of the year-end plans. That's mostly graduation week, but we have a couple of other, the students mentioned Camp Tecumta and Back to Our Roots, which are senior events that happen a little bit earlier than graduation week. We're also, we also just decided on the undergrad or underclass awards night, which would be Wednesday, May 27th, going back to an evening event for the underclass. So we're, we're trying that. And the barbecue is actually going to be Thursday, the 11th as opposed to Friday, the 12th. Step up for eighth grade will be Tuesday, the 16th, from nine to eleven-ish or so.
Oh, actually, I did find the, the present, or the sort of expo for Capstone is, we're looking to do something slightly different where projects are going to be set up in here in the afternoon of Thursday, the 14th. And then the actual expo itself would be in the morning, Friday, the 15th, from 7:45, 8:30 roughly. We're hoping that parents can arrange you want to work a little bit late and kind of see where all the students.
This is in May.
This is May, yes. Yeah, not, not two days from now. Or tomorrow for that. So, yeah, so May 14th in the afternoon. And we'll have more information.
I can add some direct these sort of treats to.
And if they extend beyond the 8:30 time, we're willing to, if we'll be able to get there, it'd be if they needed to, we'll obviously get to work.
So I had a couple of questions. What is EQS?
Educational Quality Standards. And that's part of the ACT 77. What do you think students call them doing? I just don't think that was.
They're called the School Quality Standards.
I remember these have specific ratios of student teacher and different things.
And do we know why we had a power outage? How much?
No, it wasn't here. It was, it was for JNS.
All over JNS.
Yes. The light, the light was out at 22:00.
It was a mess?
Something happened at seven because the wrestling room was delayed hours.
Last, the week before last?
Yeah, not this past week.
It was on a Saturday morning, it was like seven in the morning. And it was a complete mess. Town was red across the street, one from the other, powered beyond, oh, beyond. It was a patchwork. It was very weird. And we had power in part of the building here and not the other part, another part of the building. So it was very strange.
The thing, I, it was, we have a, one of the main servers for the district is located in this building. And Wendy was trying to explain that they, this is very simplistic terms, this is what she described it to me, is they talk to each other all weekend long, the servers, and exchange information. And if partly some servers are up and some are down, they can't, that communication is piling up somewhere. And it needs to go through its, needs to go through that. Well, Monday morning, all the kids come in, they power up all the computers and the server's trying to catch up on all that traffic from the weekend. She had, she'd come in the night before to reboot it up, but it hadn't, it hadn't finished that process. So it slowed everything down and it took more than 45 minutes for all the kids to log on to their computers on Monday morning to do that. And it was just because of the power outage and it had to cycle through that. And she, she rebooted all the servers and rebooted all the computers and it didn't help anything. But there are more, some district equipment that's being purchased that will, I mean, it's nothing, there's nothing wrong with the equipment, but we, we need more and more capacity as we grow. So she is, that is a planned purchase for next year. And we'll hopefully maybe it's.
And I was going to ask, when, do we have a timetable for that purchase? I know we've got. Is it going to be during the summer?
After July 1st and after the budget. Right, yeah. I think, I think there is, there are purchases that are being made at the elementary level too. So that will help, I think some of that, some of that will be transferred back to the elementary schools if we don't have any more issues.
That says, anybody else?
She's not on the list.
She's not on the list? Yes, well, yes, she is. C. Well, so, yes?
So I have a request of principals and that would be a report on post-graduation plans, if you're able to do that next month or in the year. In terms of this year's senior class.
This year's senior class, what are they doing? Really important information.
Let me just say that the intent is to have, is to have these reports early so that everybody can look at them and then Stephanie doesn't have to go over them and Joanna don't have to go over them unless there's questions. So, is, can we do that? Is there, are there any questions? Superintendent's report? Yes, go ahead.
On the back, you talked about notifying the teachers that might be subject to a reduction in force. And you gave a list. What happens if the budget vote fails again?
That's a really good question, George. We are required by your master agreement to provide contracts. A letter of intent is not appropriate because a letter of intent would be used in the event that the board was in the middle of negotiations and you don't have an updated master agreement. So the plan the administration has spoken about is not filling the open positions. And currently, we have several resignations, three in fact, or it's one that's not returning. So I think we have a total of four positions. So we are going to post for anticipated openings, but we are not going to be rushing to fill those positions until we're sure we have a budget.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Julie? On that same topic, what does 1.2 in ESPD?
Oh, education support staff? I mean, he has four, yeah. It's educational support personnel, I'm sorry.
So it, it's not minus of that 4.42, 1.2 are in educational support. And under legislation, H361 is the bill that came out of the House Education Committee regarding governance. H76 was that, which one was that?
That was the one on arbitration and imposition.
That was last week.
Yes, and it actually failed. It was very close, 70 to 73. And 361 was, was the consolidation? Do we have any ideas? It's at the Senate Ed level right now. We actually had a legislative breakfast this morning. We were told that, that the, it's going to be a very difficult situation. The governor is actually backing off on his support of the bill the way that it's written, which is really unfortunate. It's been very clear along the way that if we're going to make change, we need to make change through legislation. And there needs to be some very clear both carrots and sticks. And that's actually not turning out to be the case in the governor's proposal. So anything can happen with, at the Senate level. We're not, we're not finished, but. Do we know when the recess? They have. I believe they had the recess. Oh. Maybe they're done for the year? No, no, no. They had a short break, is what I'm saying. What I meant is when are they breaking entirely? Seems like it's.
They're projecting May 15th right now.
So, second reading for policies.
So just one more thing I would add to the incidental report and that is, in a month, remember, we do not have a separate board meeting in May. It's a carousel meeting. But in June, the educational presentation will be on school climate. We collect annually some data related to student discipline, information, bullying and harassment. We've had a group of students recently looking at our, our youth, youth risk behavior survey results. And, and these pieces have some implication for what we teach in health class and in, in other venues. So we have Tom Fontana, one of our CSAT clinicians, as well as health teacher, Ed Hook. Who else we're planning to be with, anyone else? To do, with Stephanie, to do a presentation on the data as well as the implications for it. That will be in June. So now we're at the second reading for fiscal management and general accountability and electronic communications. We will warn these policies for adoption next month. You will do that in your individual board meetings after the carousel. And the superintendent of advisory meeting, we'll also do the same. Just a little additional information. When you're reviewing a policy that's already on the books and has very little change, it's not uncommon to read it once and then to adopt it. But when there is a new policy on the books, it gives the public a little longer period of time to review what the board's condenings and policies.
Board development survey?
And also in her packet are the results of the board development survey. I worry this went out previously with the agenda. And I just wanted you to take a look at the results that we got. We, we had nine people fill out the survey. I have 23 board members. So we're actually going to keep it open just for a little while longer before we finalize the schedule. Looks like.
Oh, so.
Was that in the email or not?
I didn't see that.
I heard that it was going to be, but I didn't see it. I just. It was?
Yeah.
That's the thing with Google Mail. I think it's stacked within its threads and you can't find the original.
It was part of the PDF that included the names.
Can I ask a couple of questions? I forgot, I should have done this before. Hannaford Celebration of Success, do we know where that's going to be?
It's here.
Here, okay.
I guess apparently they.
Oh, here, I see. It says at the DO. Just be sorry.
It rotates each year to one of the three high schools.
Okay. And the, and the DO graduation, where is that? It's in Middlebury? At the Hannaford?
It's, that's a good question. I will let the board know where the graduation is. It's the Diversified Occupations Program. I'm sure they have a whole program, but I'm not quite sure where it's at. DO, Jay?
Yeah, I don't know. It's top one either. Actually, I believe it's down.
It's, it's in Middlebury, but is it at the tech center or is it in the high school?
It's been at the high school.
Because the program operates out of the tech center. But it's, we'll let you know.
Was going to holler. Okay. So, we're going to leave the survey open? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'll leave the survey open, I think, for just a little while longer just in the event that some last minute board members would like to log on.
Should we? I work for an email-based organization called them Kickers. So should we do a kicker?
I did.
Want to do another one?
You did. You definitely did a kicker. You did two kickers.
Two? Is there anybody on this board that hasn't completed the survey? Do you, you don't think you're, do you think you guys could?
You have to.
If you can find it.
Just send Lori an email, she'll send it to you.
Oh, individually identified too.
So we don't have a business manager?
The business manager is ill this evening. So I really need her tomorrow because we have the Agency of Education showing up for our follow-up audit to our monitoring from last year. But I did want to let you know that that is happening on Tuesday and Wednesday this week. In addition to that, we found a very experienced person who lives in Ferrisburg to fill Pam Preston's position and we were very excited about it. She understands and has. has been using the financial software that we use in the business office. She has experience in payroll and accounts payable, and just, it could not be a better opportunity to make a transition with an experienced.
Anything else? Yes, Jeff?
So, with respect to business manager report, and I understand Tanya's not here, I, I would like some clarity on the board's expectation for financial reporting. It would be my expectation, and I'm interested if it's anyone else's, it would be my expectation that we would receive in advance of each board meeting, a monthly report that updates our financials. It's a budget report that shows where we are at the end of the prior month, and that that come in our board packet in advance of the...
This to show percent spent so far, encumbrances on what's left, so that we can really look at it and say, ooh, this line item is not going to work this year.
And, and I'm raising the question as to whether or not that's anyone else's expectation. I have some sense that, and this is based on prior conversations with Tanya, in the back of my mind was that she sees doing the forecast ahead on a quarterly basis, not monthly. But I'd like to have that discussion so that there's a alignment of expectation. From my perspective, you know, one of the messages that we hear loud and clear, we received a great report last month that showed us a forecast of where we may end the school year, but I heard the message loud and clear, and other things can happen in the meantime. A student can walk through the door, something can happen with the facility. And so, if we're going to be, you know, fiduciary stewards, knowing that timely is important. If we don't find that out for this quarter until July, the school year's over, and we're heading into a budget vote, and we have no idea that something happened.
I absolutely agree with you. We need it on a monthly basis.
So, that would be my preference, and, and another key element of that is, I don't want it handed out at the meeting. It has to come in advance, so that, the agenda item is, are there questions? Not an agenda item of people sitting there and shuffling through paper, because if there are no questions, then we don't need to spend time on it.
So, does anybody have a problem? This is exactly what we got last month?
Right.
Right? I liked it. I thought it worked out perfectly fine.
So, my perspective is that it would be very useful to receive those on a monthly basis, but not necessarily every month. So, for example, no need to do it in August, when you're going into the very beginning of the fiscal year.
Although we might want August or June 30. Do you see what I'm saying?
Sure, yeah. I'm just, I'm thinking about the ebb and flow of the work process that happens in there, and obviously, at that time of year, they're gearing up, and they certainly will be, you all certainly will be this year for audit. You know, I'd rather see the audited number more timely than a, a projection in August of whether we're a twelfth of the way through the month. Jeff, on the topic of pre-distribution, I think that makes a lot of transparency sense yet. If it goes out, and it goes out, and somebody from the public gets a hold of it and decides to make statements about what that document says before the board has had a chance to receive it, had it interpreted, that could cause us to put out brush fires that we may or may not need to put out. So, that's just a, a caution. But I, I do favor monthly, in particular, I guess this time of year.
In regards to whether it goes out any month or not, once the report is set up, it's just a matter of saying, hit this report. I mean, it's, there's nothing to it because the figures are in the system already.
I, I don't know whether that's true or not, but I'm not going to argue with you about it.
Once, once the report is set up in the first place, it's there, and all you've got to do is just call it and say, I want it. Yeah.
So, you think that's possible?
I mean, that's, that's the request, and that's what we'll do.
Okay.
I mean, it had been being done previously, and Tanya's got it really nice, actually.
So... Oh, we got a detailed fiscal year budget, but I didn't see it on the website.
It is going on the website. I, we were working on other things today, but there's a plan to get a link on the A&amp;W and the full budget on the high school. We have a plan that will be done later by tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So, you're saying that you did receive a full copy of 2016?
Yeah, we got it in email, and email.
We got it.
Wednesday. Well, I sent it, I thought it was Wednesday or Thursday.
Thanks, girls. Have a wonderful night. Thank you. Anything else?
So, do you have one quick question?
Yes.
On the Friday, Director Hall?
Yes.
So, there was a forum on the 8th?
There was a forum on Thursday. Was it Thursday, February?
Yeah.
Here at the high school, two-handed. Staff were able to give feedback. I collected the feedback and reviewed it on Friday, and deliberations and some final reference checks.
Are you excited?
I'm very excited. I think we have some potential to make some significant change in that area.
Great, sounds good.
Nice to see you smile.
Yeah.
Okay. Subcommittee's, finance committee? We met today, went through all the bills. I would entertain a motion?
I will make motion that we authorize a payment of director's orders in the amount of $891,000.
Oh, right, we can't do it yet.
Yeah, you're in...
Thank you, I'm sorry. We're not in action items. I apologize, that was my fault. Thank you.
Just trying to do it.
Sorry, George, didn't mean to put you on the spot. So, we have some questions, which I will be emailing to Tanya tomorrow, and I will copy all the word on those as well. And, Richard? Which is your Hannaford?
Last two board meetings, we're, they've been revising the policy procedures on different aspects. We're having readings and re-readings of those and tests and those. Also, we have a great presentation by one of the faculty there on a very similar individual learning program. It's a different, different wording, but it's the same idea. They're, they're really embracing it there, and we're working, working hard to get each program involved in that aspect.
It's like the personal learning portion of the technical stuff, right?
It's really interesting how they, they're really working and getting, you know, a person may be coming, go there for forestry, but they have their individual learning programs, and like they, one of the presentations were justification why they need new escalator, excavator, and all the, all the benefits and, and the lack of negatives for a reason of that reasons. So, it's quite interesting in that aspect, in learning it in a technical, technical, or step-to-work idea based from learning it from our kids and educational field. I understand what I'm trying to, the difference between the two.
It's very, very educational. Those is what we've been doing.
Kelly Mills is the, I guess, assistant director or assistant principal, and we're participating in the Agency of Education's Proficiency-Based Learning Series, and Kelly sits, she makes, she sits with one of the groups from Addison County each session. So, she sat with us, and she's working, because, you know, they're all feeder schools, so they want to be connected with those initiatives going on in each of the, in each of the center schools.
I'm more and more impressed with that place. Thanks, Richard. Yes.
Richard, the budget did pass for...
Yeah, the Hannaford's budget did pass, yes.
And when do they receive enrollment information for the next school year?
We, it was passed out tentatively, what, what the ideal, the kids expressed interest for football coming, but that, there's a, right now, there's like 300 semi-kids in the county that's interested, and they, but usually, it drops down to about 100 and something. So, it's, it's that fluctuality ratio in there still.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Any, just a quick question on the finance?
Yes.
Any thorny questions?
Sorry, my friends are...
I don't need any, yeah, anything that just stands out.
No, I appreciate you asking. Let me just hit the list.
The, the Supervisory Union got a check for double the amount that they should in one period.
Oh, from, from us?
Yes. So, that throws our numbers off. We paid a $109,000 interest payment against the bond. That is a balloon.
That's a big one, yeah.
And there were two or three other smaller items that impacted there. So, we're about, if you take those items away, it's $570,000 as opposed to $800 and something.
Something's definitely got to move there.
So, there's continuing, I had asked a couple of months ago to have Cafe Services provide us a detailed invoice, and that didn't happen this one, so that will be a second ask. The credits for the construction that, that showed up because somebody went back to 2012 and brought, yeah, that hasn't been fixed. I was just going to ask to see how that's going, or when it will be. Oh, I realized today, because we had an expenditure on a grant that was the thing that you went down to Massachusetts, maybe, to the excellent schools.
Right.
Right. That was paid for with grant money, and I, I couldn't find it on the, the budget actual report that we get, and it's because the grants aren't, don't show up on record. So, I'm going to be asking Tanya to make sure that they show up on the board from now on, because we okay that money. We should see how it comes in or out, comes in or out, yes. So, we had the Hannaford contract in the budget for 15 was $69,684, but we paid $78,168. I don't know why. That seems, that seemed like a no-brainer to me, that we should be paying what we budgeted, but that's going to be a question. Kathy Cannon's name is still on one of the bills. Ask her to take care of that. There was a question on the roof leak, but I think George took care of that with you, and, oh, and I, I like, oh, one other thing that we had some pretty good-sized payments to for the health insurance, which are not encumbered this year, but will be next year, because they just didn't get to it last year, I guess, with all the mess. So, I'm wondering if we've got some more of those payments, too, because they're...
So, those were not encumbered?
$160,000.
So, that's, back to that conversation about the budget to Ashwell on a monthly basis conversation.
Lori, excuse me, I wonder if part of what we're experiencing in the transition from special ed to the, to the central office is that insurance is still coming from, there's something with the transfer of, of the insurance bills, I think, is being paid for at the local level, but we need to pay it back. So, I think that might have something to do with it. We have not had permission from the association because of the way that they get their checks. It, it, it's a, it's a pass-through of money, and it has to do with special education, and that is being cleaned up, but, but I have to work with the union to make sure they understand what that's all about.
So, it's possible that some of the payments we're making will get reimbursed?
Yes, it's possible.
And another thing that happened here, this, this check writing group covers 27 days, but we paid the $50,000 to Cafe Services twice within that time period. So, we still have some sort of problem here in that we not only aren't getting an itemized bill, but we aren't getting a bill and paying it on a regular basis.
And also, we've talked about, George and Chris and I, we feel like there's, we've gotten a good handle on, and the Supervisory Union Office, Pam in particular, has been excellent at making sure everything is there, and our review is going a little shorter, and so we're thinking maybe we should start moving towards payroll, moving in payroll generally. So, those are the things.
To remind you that one of the problems we had with last year's budget was that there was an unfunded teacher because there was no line item to pay them, and that might, we hope it isn't the case, but it might still be.
Well, thank you for doing what you do. That was very helpful, just to hear the rundown.
Yeah.
For those who've been here a while, know that that's a question that I always ask. Anything, you know, when Chris makes the motion, anything in particular, we should know. So, that was super helpful. Thanks. I feel like this process of there's being, the three of us going and being able to look at things and pass it back and forth and ask questions means that we get to a much, a better, better conclusion and a better answer to it, and that one of the three of us remembers why maybe this would be the way it was, or we get into the details in a way that's a little bit better and more useful, and it's not all on somebody's shoulders to look at in 10 minutes. So, I think it comes out a whole lot better.
There's definitely a level of depth that we have gotten, understanding of how things work, which is, personally, I think is awesome.
Sounds like there's a couple of things that you became aware of that may not have been, and not have seen the light of day previously.
Possible.
You know, going back to the way it was when I came on this board, when there was a folder passed around during the meeting, you're never going to know what was going on. So, thank you.
So... Action items. Sure.
I would move that we pay the voucher warrant for director's orders and invoices in the amount of $891,404.28.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I, I just wanted to note that it does include one construction-related bill of $21,000, approximately $22,000. There is a balance remaining on a contract with Namely Chase that's not closed out yet. It's under $100,000 remaining at this point. That will be closed out fairly soon. As indicated in Stephanie's incidental report, there were many, a few items associated with these.
So, does that mean, Jeff, that they still have two bills for $100,000 services?
That's correct.
But everything's substantial.
Correct.
Also, I forgot, that it looks like our, we, our interest payments came in under budget by $5,000, which I thought was interesting, anyway, assuming there are none in the loans. I always look for some rumors.
I think that's the deficit.
Right.
I think we had to make an action to do that, but I don't think...
I think we're going to need it for other areas. So... Approval of minutes?
You got to call it up.
Oh, yes, sorry, I, yeah, I told you my brain was mush. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of March 9th and 17th. I would like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of March ninth and seventeenth.
Move to.
Thank you, George. Second, Neil? Thank you.
Sorry, Neil, didn't mean to cut you off.
Quite all right, I've been very relatively quiet tonight. And I'm as usual noisy.
So are there any, does anybody have any issues with the meeting minutes?
Just an observation that there seem to be a good bit of detail.
Which I appreciate it.
You were at it last time, to catch all those comments in the way that you did. I've got one question, but I sense you have one too, so. It had to do with the reorganization, and you can find it, is a little confusing to me. So this is in regards to the Addison Northwest delegates, or Addison Northwest Supervisory Union delegate voting members. So, I nominated you two, Kurt nominated you. And then the minutes indicate that I made a motion to close the nominations and instruct the recorder to cast a ballot each for you two, but then that Kurt moved to close nominations and cast a ballot for you, sir. I'm not sure that's how it played out. I think the idea was that you're de facto a voting member, and so you guys were the ones that were moved to be the voting members. Is that right?
Yeah, at least I heard that.
That's what I got, that the chair, the chair is already there, and then the other two were selected.
So we did not, well, I didn't, well, I may have made the mistake to nominate you, Laurie, after you were made chair, I don't think I would have asked to close nominations and have ballots cast for you both. It just seems like, there was a lot going on there, but it seems like it's not exactly right.
I, I agree with exactly what you're saying. I think the outcome is the same.
It is.
Not to, not to say anything against pointing this out.
It is, but.
But I don't know how we can straighten this out and make it truly accurate.
I believe you have to nominate the chair. There's nothing in the school's bylaws that says the chair is de facto.
The way it was translated, it was a legal discussion, and it came out to the fact that the chair, chair was de facto, even though it's not, not a she-er thing that we have, but we chose that chair was. And Neil, you did originally did nominate Laurie and Chris. And then there was discussion that there was another, another opening still. And that's when Kurt brought up George.
Okay.
I think all three were nominations, and all three were voted, and it was, it's.
Okay.
And, and just to shed a little light, in Ferrisburg, the situation was similar in that we made an assumption that the chair was automatically one of the three, and that two of the other members would fill the other two slots. It's, so I, it may not be policy, but I think everybody thinks that way.
Yeah, anyway, no, Ben, you're right to point out that it's not a foregone thing. So it's all good the way it is, I think. I think, I just.
I had a comment on the March ninth, now, on the last page, under the discussion of the fire alarm system. I would ask to strike the words paid through the construction fund, because I don't believe that's accurate, and it doesn't relate to the motion that we made.
Oh, I see, so we, did we actually front the money for it that way, and then have to pay for it through the method we voted on? It's not that we actually paid for it from those funds, but that was the way that we tied it over until we could have our vote to actually, what do you wanna call it, go into a lease agreement with them or something?
Correct. I, I just, I don't think that we should have the minutes saying that it's paid for through the construction fund that we were taking a motion to pay for in a different way.
Right, exactly.
I just think it confuses the issue. And I did send to the board, actually Joanne sent today, I was a memo to the board, because by the time we got to this, I had the last meeting, it was late, and my presentation wasn't particularly clear, so I did send the entire file memo to.
I'm comfortable with that.
Do we need a motion to amend the minutes? Have a stern discussion.
No, you, you call for a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Right, okay, as amended, alright. So do we need to change the motion?
No, it's pretty pro forma.
Got it, thank you.
Whatever comes up during discussion, Laurie's got, she'll change it.
Okay, alright. Anything else on the minutes? Seeing there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, thank you. Discussion items, budget vote. Does make that.
Yay.
So, we, Laurie and I, Gloria and I took a stab at following the thread of feedback for the brochure that was created, and I do want you to know that we sent it out to you earlier today, but even that one, we made, you didn't send it out.
No, because I was helping Laurie.
No.
Okay, so this is, this is accurate. I was gonna say that when we sent out earlier, I went through and made just a couple of minor changes, but this is the final one, so I don't know if you wanna take a minute and a couple of minutes and read through it, make sure this is the information you want, ask any questions.
So this has not gone to the printer yet?
Has not gone to the printer. I said that I would have you look at it one more time.
So one suggestion is, under the, what factors increase the proposed budget as compared to the current year? We now have a sentence in here that indicates the increase in total educational spending relative to the current year. And you gave us the backup information for that. What I'm concerned about is, I believe we need a very brief definition of what educational spending is, because the bold sentence is about the budget, and now we're inserting a different term, and we should define that. And I, I believe, but I'll leave it to you, I believe educational spending is budget plus revenue.
So you could literally.
So it might be parenthetical, just the increase in total educational spending, parenthesis, budget less revenue, close parenthesis.
Or after, that's in four brackets.
Yep.
The total. That would be, I understand.
But either way, I think you'd need to leave it on a simpler way that people would understand.
You may be technically correct, sir, but I think you're gonna confuse people.
Well, the issue would be, if you look at the Article One, and you look at that nine point four million dollars, you're not gonna get to one point oh two percent.
Correct. Why don't we, why don't we say that this amount is the increase in instructional spending?
Well, end spending is a defined term on that tax sheet. I mean, it is, it has a meaning. So I don't, I don't think we should create a new term. You know the tax sheet?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Because you asked that question, George, in email, and I referred you to the tax sheet, it's line twelve.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm sorry, yeah, eleven.
Yeah, because the numbers don't add up.
Right, and you can't get to one point oh two percent, that was my concern. So if we don't define it differently, it, it doesn't appear correct. So, that was just what I was thinking, jumping in.
So are you saying you don't like the idea of adding the parentheses? Is it too complicated?
He's, he's way more educated than I am. I'll go with his take on this. I, hopefully, the majority of the taxpayers are going to read it the way he did.
Because you don't have a better suggestion?
No, I don't.
And then I do question on the central office cost. Change, I don't mean you, but the, the number there is, is changed. It's now two twenty-one, and in the prior analysis in detail, it was two thirty-four.
I, I went to the book, because you're, I just went to the book.
Yeah.
You're, you're asking for these to line up with your, with the previous information, so that's what the calculation's from.
Okay.
I have a very subtle edit, which has not so subtle meaning.
Yeah.
So what factors increase the proposed budget, under that first bullet, and in the second line, where it reads, "and corrects the mismanagement of former administrators that resulted in deficit spending in prior years." Like to change the "of" to "by." Corrects the mismanagement by former administrators.
Yes.
Because otherwise, it implies that somebody mismanaged the former administrators.
So did you have any?
Otherwise, this is crazy.
A lot here.
It is a lot here, but I think if you weigh it's laid out and organized, it's, it was, it was, after spending. Expenditures less revenues.
Can I just add something, the to contact your school board member, go to the VUHS website. It's not clear when you go to that website where to then go to find your information, which maybe we should make it more clear. Or, the information is actually on the ANWSU website. So I don't know if it's easier to say VUHS.org and then explain.
We debated that this afternoon.
Which we did, okay. So we could explain where it is, I mean, if you know where to find it, it's easy to find, because it's just under About Us, and then Board of, and it's right there. But it seems like we should have something that says VUHS.org, About Us. I don't know if there's a way to add that in, or to just say ANWSU under the School Boards tab or something.
No, because it's coming from the high school, it should have High School. I like the idea of going through the high school, for sure.
Through the website, sure.
It's better, yeah.
So is there.
We have a new front page under development, it's not ready for prime time yet, although it's gonna be beautiful, our new technology integration, so it's working very hard on it. You know, I'll ask her where she is with it, it's gonna be a lot easier to find this information, but right now, I think it does spend, it's under About Us.
So I'm, I'm gonna be of broken record on this. I don't, I'm looking at the book.
Yeah.
The two twenty-one, four eighty is not right, it's two thirty-one, four eighty.
Yep, I was just, two thirty-one?
Four eighty.
What page are you on, Jeff?
I'm on page twenty-nine, and it's the difference between eight oh three, three fifty-eight, and five seventy-one, eight seventy-eight. And I didn't use a calculator, but I checked my math twice.
I did that three times, I used a calculator.
Coming up with two thirty-one, four eighty.
No, I, I used the calculator, and it comes out, comes out to be four eighty-one.
Jeff, could you explain, since you drafted this text here? Can you explain where it says net increase in cost for sixteen is only twenty-one thousand, and obviously that number needs to be recalculated, but only twenty-one thousand, but the assessment is not offset by any savings from surplus as occurred during the current year? I'm not clear, just working on that.
So this is, the intent of this bullet is to try to explain it, and it's sounding like that didn't work. So, well, the, so the, the cost, this, this will make sense when we change that beginning number. So what we're, we're saying is, it's two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars higher. That's driving partly the increase, okay? Next sentence, in FY fifteen, current year, Addison Northwest Supervisory Union carried forward a surplus that offset the VUHS assessment for these costs by two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
Yep.
The net increase is the, then is the difference, it's only twenty-one thousand dollars. But the assessment is not, in this year, is not offset by any savings from a surplus as occurred during the current year.
That's the last part, I get everything up till the assessment is not offset by any savings from a surplus as occurred during the current year.
There was a surplus in the previous year, it was applied.
And that comes in as revenue.
Right, and so that reduced the amount that.
No, it doesn't come in as revenue. This is the assessment from the Supervisory Union. The bill from the Supervisory Union was two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars lower.
Right, oh, because they had a surplus.
Then it would have been, had they not had their surplus.
So.
Yeah, got it, okay.
Maybe, maybe you need to break that explanation apart a little bit, so that it's clearer to people, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, the Supervisory Union had a surplus, and so they put it towards what it would have, would have paid. And they don't have a surplus anymore.
Yeah.
Because people would think, after listening, they would think that the high school had a surplus in the last year, and then they'd be confused, because they didn't.
Right.
And that's where I was getting confused, I'm like, surplus, what surplus did we have?
Addison Northwest Supervisory Union carried forward a surplus.
Yeah.
Not, not the high school. So I can take another stab at trying to rate this, so that it's clearer.
Or, is it worth adding that central office there? I know you just said it in, like, the very beginning of that bullet, but in fiscal year fifteen, the central office carried forward a surplus, or ANWSU central office carried forward a surplus, because I missed that too.
Yeah.
That would, so. It's there, it's right there in the beginning, but.
If you just put that in bold. I mean, that would tie it to the Supervisory Union as opposed to the high school.
If, if, if you, if we stopped at the net increase in cost for sixteen is only twenty-one thousand dollars, stop it right there, it's gonna be twenty, you redo the math. Right, okay, so whatever it is, you know, whatever it is, and stop right there. Does that still retain the same meaning or not? Because I should be able to get this, but it's not.
It's the difference between the, the assessment and the budget line. So the budget line item is only going up twenty thousand dollars. The assessment is going up two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, because the assessment is not being offset by a surplus. That's the issue. We can, I'll take another stab at trying to rate this, because obviously it's not working.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I usually I get this stuff pretty well, too, but.
Because it's the assessment for fiscal year sixteen. I think you're talking about the end there. What'd you get, and it does say that.
You're talking about the assessment for sixteen as opposed to the assessment for fifteen, which was impacted by a surplus in fourteen.
Correct. Nice job, George. So.
So.
I, I was just thinking, if you could just simplify and say, and just say, there is no surplus to offset the expense in fiscal year sixteen.
And you asked me, Kurt, who is, who has the surplus?
Yeah, yeah, right.
The problem that I have with this whole thing is that we are presently in the process of dealing with a three-quarter million dollar deficit from fourteen. So how did we have a surplus? Where, those figures just don't even come in the same room.
So, the surplus was at the Supervisory Union. The surplus being described here was at the Supervisory Union. And, and that's why it indicates in FY fifteen, Addison Northwest Supervisory Union carried forward a. And that's why it indicates in FY fifteen, Addison Northwest Supervisory Union carried forward a surplus. So, I'll take another run at this.
Good.
The intent is to make that distinction. It's not being made.
Could I offer, you perhaps need to elaborate that it was the supervisory union surplus that artificially affected, you know, that it was an artificial savings that accrued to Virgin. Somehow to indicate more clearly that it was an unexpected, inappropriate application of a surplus that had nothing...
It was a totally appro, I, I, I really wanna be very careful. It was totally appropriate. It returned to taxpayers the surplus.
It artificially understated the high school's assessment.
Yes.
And, and, and my suggestion is you might include that. Because I'm with Neil, it took me five readings before I understood what you were talking about, even though I knew what you were talking about.
It's a very complicated topic. I just, I get sensitive without using words like artificial, because it's none. It was in compliance with statute. We return the surplus to the taxpayers. So, there's nothing artificial.
Well, understated, the assessment was artificially understated. Don't you think? Well, it, it's, the debating is, is that was not my intent. I did not want to engage in a dialogue with the board because that's not what I'm allowed to do. But just to try and elaborate. But as, as a layperson in the audience reading it, I knew what you were trying to say, Jeff, but it took me several reads to get there and I only got it because I've been coming to the meetings. So, if you use me as the barometer...
We may have to design what assessment we use.
Yeah, well, I mean, you don't wanna get too wordy. I mean, you're trying to...
Yeah, it's supposed to be a bullet comment.
Yeah. Or just that, you know, a surplus did not occur to the supervisory union or something.
I guess if you, if you have an opportunity to just take another pass at it, you know, considering the scrutiny with which every word that anybody on this board happens to write gets subjected.
I think you were brave to take a stab at it.
Okay, well, we'll take another stab. I know we gotta get this to the printer, so.
I have a question now that we are back in another revision. When Jeff gets done wordsmithing this bullet and it goes to the printer, when is it actually going to end up in the voters' hands?
Depends on the printers, but it's usually the open and half, but then it's processed.
They aren't, they aren't hardly gonna get it before they go to vote. And anybody that votes ahead is not gonna get it.
We will ask for a rush on this and I will find out and get back to the board and let you know when we get finished.
Appreciate that. I think it needs to be sooner rather than later.
Great.
As soon as you finish, we're good.
Well, I understand that. I truly do, but...
This is a board document, though. Thank you.
Oh, you're absolutely right and it's gotta be correct, yeah.
Lori.
Yes.
Can I say one...
Yeah, of course.
This is awesome, you guys. And now, you're at the state where you're trying to market the budget, basically. There's nothing really very warm and fuzzy about this at all. And I was just wondering, I don't know what you could do. If you could put a photograph, go Commodores, a puppy, something. I look at this and I try really hard to understand what it all means and it's just, it's just a little picture. Something that is gonna grab people and say, this school's important. I don't know what it is, but...
The only place to put a picture is on that side and that will exponentially increase your printing cost.
Well, how do we get the name and address or something? We've gotta have a return address and a, is there a way we could put a little photograph or something?
We have the following information on, it'll be a prior triangle.
Yep.
So, one will be for your mailing age. So, you'll have one side and if you open it, you could have two.
All right.
So, we could put like the information about the town clerks on one side and side there. And you could put the dates and stuff on, that would give you more room on here to add more things.
I like the idea though of having it as the very first thing they see is something warm and fuzzy. I really like that idea.
Our band just won gold or, you know, I don't know, something, just something.
Well, that'd be very simple to print that, you know, Commodores Music, you know, scored best band of New England
Ooh, I like that.
On April, whatever it was, ten.
Yeah.
Ooh, I really like that.
Or, I mean, I have, I have a zillion pictures.
Right here.
The marching band, other events, I mean, I've got a lot of photographs.
Right here, two, you know, two responses.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't know where, where that'll lie, but...
Well, can we...
Or a picture of the school. I don't know, with kids.
I really like the idea...
These one day, I don't know, something.
I like the idea of saying that we've got this award. I think that's, it's timely, it's interesting, it shows that we're still interested in the music department here, which I think some people don't think we are.
Or a short form list of accomplishments.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would say is, is kind of a list of, you know, we have a student who's going to the Nationals and, you know, the speech competition at the league. She won for the state of Vermont.
Well, we have about this much time to get it done.
I know, I'm sorry for it, but just something a little warm and fuzzy with things just...
Well, can we rely on you guys to put together what you think or?
Together, both of us.
We do another cycle of wordsmithing, we'll get in another three days by the time it crosses everybody's emails.
We can't afford that.
So, Jay, what you're thinking is put a bullet list on the back?
Yeah, I mean, on one of the other...
On one of the folds.
Flaps, on the folds, yeah. So, the address...
So, that the address goes on one side and the bullets... VUHS is amazing and this is why.
VUHS Commodores.
VUHS Commodores need your support. VUHS Commodores need your support and this is why, this is what we've been doing. I like that. Is it gonna double our cost, printing cost? Shouldn't? And can you get that done for tomorrow morning? Tomorrow afternoon?
Sure.
Yeah? Okay. That's awesome. I thank you so much for saying that, it's great.
It needs to go to the editors this week and it's gonna be today.
If we can get it to the printers tomorrow afternoon, like it's...
Is that give Jeff the time he needs and get some feedback on how he reads words?
He's already talking to us. You want me to get it?
Okay.
Um, so, Lori, once this is minted, um, if I could, we could get it in PDF, I will start doing the electronic thing with it. So, assuming everybody's okay with that, but I assume they are.
Yeah, Richard wants an PDF too.
Yeah, I might get that.
Oh, yeah, because you guys use Front Porch over in Penn, some of the stuff around.
Right. Plus, we, the town does.
The town clerk has all their emails, I just love them. That's awesome.
Yeah, once it's in this, if it's in here, we're committed to it, so go for it.
So, let me just summarize. Jeff's working on the second bullet to get some, a little bit of clarification. We're going to add a line to the www.vuhs.org slash About Us, right? And we're gonna add some warm and fuzzy stuff about the VUHS Commodores and how amazing this school is. Come back. Is there anything else? Okay.
And we'll forever hold it easy.
We're all working on it. I think we've been, personally, I think all the board members have done an amazing job of a very difficult situation and supporting the board and what we voted despite some differences of opinion. I think we've done a really good job of it. And thank you guys all for doing that. So, communication plan. Are you ready to move on? I sent a list, actually an email to the parent group and also to Nancy, asking, and I know you've been away, both of you guys have been away, asking about the phone bank. Because it was really effective last year and I'm hoping that possibly the parent group and maybe some of the teachers, under the guise that the teachers would be fellow community members rather than teachers, right? We could do that, that'd be great. You guys think you might be able to pull that off?
Yeah, I mean, we worked in collaboration with Jay the last time and the teachers. So, definitely, of course, we just have to...
Yeah, awesome. We're gonna do...
I just wanna, I just wanna sort of voice, not an objection, but just a statement, that I don't know whether I feel comfortable as a board member asking the teachers to contact the community members. If you guys wanna work with Anta, awesome, but I feel, and it's a great idea if the teachers wanna call, anybody they wanna call, but I feel a little uncomfortable asking.
I think the teachers came forward at the last board meeting and said...
And just sort of for the minutes reflecting my concern that about that, about the optics of it.
So, so I think what the board is asking for, or at least what I think the board is asking for, is that we need a phone bank because it was really effective last year. And whoever can take that on as a responsibility, the parent group, et cetera, does that seem better?
I'm just making my own observation, just for myself, that...
Certainly, it's not our...
Specific respect to the teachers.
Right, I don't think it's our intention to ask the teachers to do anything particularly.
And I think that it's very important that no matter who does what, that they don't express an opinion, that they just ask for people to vote.
That's what we did last time.
Yeah.
Yes, and we also asked if they had any questions. Some of them we were able to answer, some not, so, but you know, we're just having this document and things like that. So, but yes, there is no please vote yes or anything like that.
Now, the other question, you're talking about social media night. Is this document going to be published on the high school website?
Yes. I've already sent our webmaster and I asked her to, when she posted that, to include a link to all the board contact information just to, the issue we just talked about. So, she'll, she'll put that right up there.
The other thing that happened last year was there were signs printed that were posted around town, support your school.
They're still out there.
We had, you know, the metal signs and then there were also like eight and a half by eleven card stock signs that were printed. So, I don't know, there's...
They exist somewhere?
We still have...
These guys still have?
We put them out for the first vote, but we didn't, I don't know, probably just...
That's how they'll show back up on the street a couple of days before the vote.
The printed signs had the date on them, so, because I brought Jay, I had a stack of them still from the last vote, but it has...
Plastic, that was smart not to have any date, so, hold on Tuesday.
We put it on Tuesday, on the big blue ones and then we have white ones that say today. So, we have to get those out on the day.
Awesome, awesome. Another thing that I thought was great, last year, we did the survey. Do you think that would be possible, Nancy?
I emailed you and updated, I had stats, looked at it today.
Okay.
We took off, if you voted no, complete, because that was the error we made before. The same questions, I think we edited, I didn't bring it with me. The one that said, I am not going to vote until the audit is complete. We changed to, I can't, it was more of the financial outcome. I, I sent it to you, I don't know if you have, I might have it on my phone.
That's okay.
But it was, it was still indicating that we're not a hundred percent financially secure, but it didn't say anything negative. You understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
That people might have a concern still.
Yep.
I'm trying to think how...
It's okay, that sounds like you're gonna get a handle on it.
But I sent it to Lori and I didn't know if the board still wanted to do that, but if they do, you can email it to everyone or we can share it with every, I shared it with you on a Google Doc.
Yes. Does anybody have a problem with that? I mean, I've found it very helpful.
The, the thing is, we could leave it there with a box. I don't think we can man it.
Okay.
The students didn't man it last year. We had teachers that had prep periods that went up and stood by it afterwards. Virgin's did have the highest return, well, I shouldn't say that, not percentage wise, but number wise.
Would it...
Because we had a person there.
Makes a big difference.
I don't know if we could ask parents.
There was somebody that said they thought it was a good idea in, somebody D. in those other minutes, wasn't it? Said, somebody Miller?
Deana Miller.
Deana Miller.
Yeah, Deana Miller.
She's in Perrishburg.
Is she somebody I could contact or someone one of us could contact about? I don't know her, but, and you had said also about...
Yeah, she and I had sort of tossed it around as far as doing some level of staffing there. I work on Tuesdays, so I couldn't do it until the evening.
Okay. I, I mean, Perrishburg in particular, because you guys have two votes. Yes, we do.
Would it make sense perhaps to do it electronically as opposed to doing it the Bill Doyle way? And so, what I'm thinking of is what the Addison Northeast Board did where they got a Google poll out, Survey Monkey thing really quickly to get some guidance. Of course, we all, you know, you may have seen in the paper what they're doing. But that notwithstanding, we could put the same survey instrument together that you guys articulated in Survey Monkey and then put that link out through Front Porch Forum to each municipality so that anybody who's on the Front Porch Forum would see it. You know, plus, put it out on the parente news, put it on the front of the website, you know, put it through the various people that we may know that push things around on social media. We might get a better return, might get a crankier return too. But time it so that it doesn't go out until seven o'clock at night on Tuesday then. So that it doesn't influence the outcome.
I think more information is always, almost always better. Do you, do you wanna head that up?
I mean, I can, I can try and get it out. Is that survey coded? That, is it written up electronically?
Mm-hmm.
So, it'll be pretty easy to...
It's the same one, we just, and we'd be happy to, I don't know, you can do it electronically too when you collect the data too.
Well, yeah, that's the thing.
I think it probably wastes the data for you.
Right.
You're, it just sounds like you might have more than one way of...
No, 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 I'm, I'm more than one way of getting the link out.
Google Docs.
Getting the link out, more than one way.
There's all sorts of ways you can get that.
I, I think we oughta do the paper as best we can and if we can get people to man, I'm, I'll take care of Addison. But I also, I love the idea of doing it electronically as well. That's a great idea.
It's, it's, it's additional work. I mean, I think that it's the kind of thing that would do nicely to offset the manual labor associated with keep punching a bunch of paper copies that are at the, you know, at the voting locations. But I, you know, if you wanna do it by paper, then we should just do it that way.
Well, what if we did it by paper and said, if you want to do this electronically?
So, you're doubling up the work.
Yeah, okay, all right. I don't wanna double the work.
You have to go to the survey or, you know, and, or you have to...
You're gonna get two responses from the same person.
Keep punching, that will do, that's true. So...
Well, personally, I don't, go ahead.
The target audience that you're after are people who are actually voting. The question would be, you might get lots of data back if we do it in electronic format from lots of people who aren't necessarily the target market.
That's true, and we would not.
You're absolutely right.
And so, I mean, you know, and I don't know what percentage of the people who are actually going into the polls to vote are, you know, getting the electronic version of it or not, or at least being exposed to it.
Nancy, what did you get last time in numbers of responses as opposed to numbers of voters?
The people that showed at the poll, we got about a quarter of the people, I think Waltsham had a higher percentage and Virgin's. That they responded to the survey.
Okay, so, twenty-five percent of the people that voted responded.
And that's because they went in to vote and when they came out, they said, I... And that's because they went in to vote, and when they came out, they said, "I already answered that question," and then went other way. You know, I mean, that's just, I can imagine.
Well, I was only at the Virgens polls, so I can tell you that people were in a hurry. Some people were just not open to doing it, period.
Yep.
I mean, there was, no, I waited till they came out and then I said, "Would you like to fill out a survey to help the school board understand how people vote?"
Mm-hmm.
Or why people vote?
Mm-hmm.
And...
Great, thank you.
So, you'll take care of that, Nancy?
If you would like us to tabulate and do all that, I'm just, I'm not gonna try and man it, it was really hard last year.
It was a hard year. You really shouldn't, anyway, you shouldn't be using staff to do that anyways.
Especially if it's during the day.
During the day and tax paid. Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. Well, does anybody think it's not worth the time?
But, no, we got... Just caution is that it's, it's after the fact and analytical, it's not part of a communication plan to get out the vote.
Right.
You're right.
So don't confuse the issues.
You're right.
You know, that might be a helpful tool for us to be doing, it wouldn't go to voters, but that might be a helpful tool for us to be using in November and December, when we're trying to decide on a budget to put before the voters. When you do it after the fact, it's after the fact. So if we have limited volunteer time, my suggestion would be that that limited volunteer time be dedicated to a phone bank to ensure strong turnout in advance of the vote.
My thinking on the survey was that it was helpful when it failed.
No, it was only used after the revote last year, which did not fail.
All right.
So, again, it was, it was useful information, but it's not a communication tool, and it didn't help formulate the budget, it was after the fact.
Okay.
Nancy, is it a valuable exercise for your class?
It took a lot of time, it wasn't invaluable, but I'm, I'm listening to what he's saying, if it's not useful, I can be doing other things too. I mean, it's always a process, so they learn from the process. Well, so that's more...
I think voters responded very favorably to being asked their opinion, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to not confuse, this is not a communications tool.
I'm not sure they come out, the results would come out much differently than they did last time, and if you want me to resend that, I will.
If you, I'm sorry.
I resub the last result, so you can look at it.
Right. Okay, well, I don't want you to do any more work than is, so I think we should move on.
We'll get people to call.
And what I would ask, if, if the parent group is, a community group is willing
to organize a phone bank, please communicate with the board, because we should be volunteering for our list of 50 calls.
Okay, sounds good.
And it, it's such that it's not, it can't be on site at the school, correct?
Correct, and the Legion's been great about providing space to do that in the past.
Jeff, you had said something about letter to the editors?
And I will do that as soon as we've got this settled down, so I will shoot to have that out at the end of the week.
And Joanne, you were talking about maybe calling Liz Ryan about Women of Wisdom. Is there any other ideas? People want Front Porch Forum, you know, is gonna take your Front Porch Forum with this, and we're sending this out hopefully a couple of days before. Anybody else have any ideas?
Can I ask, do you think the phone bank would be most successful, the night before the vote or the week before the vote?
The night.
The night before the vote?
So last time we did it before the informational meeting, because that was one other thing we were able to say, and there's an informational meeting Thursday, April 30th, so my recommendation would be to do it towards the beginning of that week, so we come back from a break, I mean, it's, if we're doing it that Tuesday, that's one day before the vote.
Do we have an informational meeting set yet?
There is.
There is, it's at the top of it.
Ah, there it is.
So can we just pick that date, send this in phone?
That Tuesday?
Yes, it's Monday.
Contentionally, I just need, I can, I need to clarify one other thing before we do that, and then I can, I can probably do that tomorrow.
Okay.
So can we talk about the informational meeting as a communication tool?
So, speaking for myself, it's my view that we have not used the informational meeting effectively as a communication tool. At the informational meeting that preceded the last vote, there was no presentation, there was no story about the school, it was up to people sitting in chairs who received a copy of the report as they walked in the door to ask questions. I, I would suggest this is our opportunity to tell a story of what goes on in the school. I don't think we need 30 PowerPoint slides, but five might be helpful, talking about what's going on here and answering some basic questions that we know voters have with respect to the budget. What I'm talking about is an affirmative effort to use the informational meeting to provide information, not to passively sit here and wait for questions.
Thank you, reading that up. Can we get the administration?
So administration will create a PowerPoint, maybe a video on some recognized issues and accomplishments and some plans for the future, and we'll take the first 15 minutes to do that.
Make it a wow for that, wow. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you for, really, Jeff, thank you for bringing that up.
Simple budget visuals, you know, if people want to get drilled into it, we go drill into it, they will.
I actually like the idea of this storyboard, and the financials are kind of ancillary. Just, I mean, you'll figure it out, I'm sure you'll be good. Thank you. Anything else?
What documents do you want to have available?
Detailed budget.
I think it would also be useful to have for some people, because they may come and they might get a copy of the budget, but they're not seeing it as it relates and compares to what we proposed before. And so when they can't look at what was in their annual report and go, "Oh, how is this different than what was before?" And they might really like that too.
Well, there's some of the annual reports that are still around.
All the blogs.
Yeah, so, point to them that night, probably a good idea.
Can we make sure that the detailed budget has headers at the top of each page, please? I love this idea of, of, I mean, we're, we're gonna put some accomplishments on here, I just, I mean, maybe this would be it, but I love the idea of having a package that says, "This is, this is the great stuff we're doing." I don't know, maybe that this would do it.
You know, it's pushing the schedule too hard, but the bullets that Jay and Stephanie choose to highlight on that should probably be the bullets that are spoken about.
Yeah, I like that, I like that, nice consistency.
At least included, I think it'd be too...
All right, I like that a lot. That's, that's beautiful. Okay. What else? Would it be appropriate to have kids at the informational meeting?
No, I, probably not. It will be about kids, but to have them come and perform probably not.
All right. Move on. So, the financial requests. Joanne and I met to do the agenda and she suggested that we might take a different approach for dealing with financial questions. We have this outstanding issue about moving forward of surpluses and deficits and, and it's all in the email and we're not getting anywhere. And so Joanne thought maybe we could, when we get a financial request, bring it, put it on the agenda and put it out there.
You mean, so the email that we received this afternoon at 3:00, for example?
I think the board should consider some timelines, I think that's a little bit too soon. Seriously, but I...
That's just pretty ponderable.
The point is this, the full board should deliberate on the questions that are being posed to the board, not just individual board members when you read it, so it gives you a chance to talk about it. I think some of the questions we need to ask ourselves is, number one, does any one board member have enough information to respond? Is this something you want the superintendent to create a response to? And then the next piece is, how much time should be put in? Do we have documents that describe or can, that we can provide that will answer the questions? Or if it, it will require a certain amount of time on staff, then we need to think about charging, because this is substantial information. I have to tell you this for myself, the requests that are coming to the office and the timeline by which they're expecting to be researched and responded to is nothing that I can keep up with. It's, it's coming too fast, it's coming in a, in a way that is putting us off of the regular work that we do, and, and answering the public is important, but I think this board needs to talk about how you want to answer your public, not just assume that when an email comes through that someone is just gonna answer that from the central office. So all communication by email should first start with board, and then we'll make a decision about how you want to respond, whether it's, you want the superintendent to create it, whether an individual board member does it, and then how much time is it gonna take to do that?
I don't think that previously there was a supposition on the part of board members that something that came in as addressed to the board was just gonna magically be taken care of. I mean, there was, you, you and Tanya made a very strong effort to answer to some of those questions when they seemed to be coming at a pace that was answerable, and then as that pace increased, obviously, you know, I'm not sure we can answer every question that comes in from the public to the full satisfaction of the individuals that ask.
The law says that if, if the public asks for information, such as in an audit report or an already created document, that should be easy enough for you to refer the, the community member to that document. When it requires the board or the business office to create a document, that is a different story. If there's more of an analysis, where there has to be a report that is created, that is a different level of request, and you can say either yes, and then we're gonna charge you for it, or no, these are the documents by which you can do your own research to look for it. But I think as a board, this is something that you should manage as a group.
Does it have some policy that already kind of, we want to govern how that happens or do we need to make some?
I'm researching that right now with the Levon School Boards Association, I don't know if other places have policies, but in any event, you should have little knee procedures by which we operate.
So, that sounds like an excellent idea, and I would love to know from yours, you know, if you have any experiences from other districts to bring forward as to how to handle, you know, some of those requests.
But at the very least, now, I think we should agree that if the board gets communication from the public, I don't know what's reasonable, a couple of days before, where you've all had a chance to read it, and it can come under discussion, great, but if it comes the day of, I don't think it's fair game to have expected the full board to get that communication on that day and figure to deliberate about it at the next board meeting.
I can, I mean, I don't get emails the day of the board meeting unless they're there first thing in the morning. I'm off doing things and then at 3:30, I'm in the district office reviewing the bills. I don't, I don't see an email that was sent any more than maybe something at seven in the morning if I go and check my email that morning. So, I agree with you.
So, when, who's gonna make the determination that the email request is gonna make it to the board?
Well, so, so what, what we've been doing up to about a year ago was if something came in and it was in, from a Patton resident, you know, we should take a look at that and say, "This is a big, this is a big request," or, "Oh, I got this." If you got this, you would answer, you know, you'd call our mutual friend and you'd have a conversation with them, and that would be that. Otherwise, if a board response was determined to be necessary, we would have the clerk kind of put that together with the assistance of the rest of the board, if some formalized written response was needed. In some instances, we would have, ask for, in fact, Dan Captain's help to do that, or more previously, or more recently, or it up to him.
Okay, the, the other thing is, I understand exactly what you're talking about, about a more detailed response requires a bill, and the rest of the state government does it, there's no reason why we shouldn't. When we're, when we've got the financial problems that we got, and somebody wants extra work done by the office, then they should have to pay for it. You have to establish a charge and some, some scope of what that charge is gonna cover, some sliding scale.
It's in statutes.
It's in statutes.
Is it, okay. Not for just for copying, but for actually for analysis?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Then, is it sufficient to offset?
I don't think it's sufficient, but it's...
First, first half hour is great, that's the one thing.
Oh, that's bad. I've seen some of those requests, they're not half hour requests.
They're not half hour requests, I mean, they're, they're often analysis and research and more than a couple of hours.
So...
And then getting paid, I've done it before.
Well, you don't hand them the information if you don't get the pay. If this is in statute, we don't need to do anything, you're just gonna start charging.
What I'd like the board to acknowledge is when we get communication that is extensive, requesting a lot of information from the public, I think it needs to come to this board for a discussion, not any procedure.
Right, so I would suggest our procedure be that when there's communication to the board, that the superintendent's responsibility is to acknowledge receipt of the communication on what date and to indicate when it will come before the board.
Is that the superintendent's responsibility or the board's responsibility?
I, I believe it's the superintendent's responsibility, so that if there's the opportunity to add it to an agenda that's not yet been developed, this is when it can next be added to an agenda for discussion. So, knowledge receipt, timeframe in which the board can consider it, is the response that comes when something is received.
I think that's right.
All right. My, my job is to support the boards, communication and support to the boards, and as an agent of your, as your representative, I think that's the appropriate thing to do. This way, you're not responding, I'm responding on your behalf, and I'm also putting, I am also letting them, letting them know that if they want to come to a board meeting to listen to your deliberation on this date and time, they can do so.
Right, that's great. Do we have an email hanging out there?
We do.
From today.
Oh, I missed that.
From the same sector.
Yeah, okay.
So I will do just that.
Respond and we'll get it on the agenda. All right, anything else with that, Joanne, so?
That's good.
Was there a question in there or a request for an analysis?
There, there were.
You don't need to relive it, I'll, I'll read, I'll read it in detail, I wasn't able to, I was driving home, you know.
All right, then the last discussion items?
Exactly.
On facilities?
On facilities.
So, I, I just don't want to lose the thread here. We asked Stephanie and Bob to begin work on a...
We asked Stephanie and Bob to begin work on a maintenance and operations plan. You've given us a draft of a long-term forecast. We need to do something with that. You need support in order to implement that, to talk about where the resources are going to come from. And I, I think we need a functioning facilities committee to work with you outside a regular board meeting to be able to then come to board meetings with some conclusions and specific suggestions for the board to act upon. So I, I'm concerned that we, you know, we, we got a nice stroke of work done. We've got plenty more to do, and it's not on our agenda, and I don't like how we're going to move from that plan to implementation of that plan. So my suggestion is a functioning building committee, and I haven't had time to give it any more thought than that, but it needs to be a regular agenda item and needing to be moving to implement that.
I agree.
And I would volunteer to be on that.
Anybody else interested?
I would be.
I hope so.
I've dug that through you so far, I don't think I have a lot to add, especially in relation to your experience.
Is two, are two board members coming enough, do you think, or...
Two board members, I would ask Stephanie and maybe Bob, maybe Tom.
Modelize with three, so that if the directors, the Hudson grounds was included, one of the, the subcommittee board, the council, and additional people with this, with this manager occasionally, if there ever needed.
Yeah, I think there are interested community members who may be able to add some expertise. Haven't thought that through just yet, but I can see that being beneficial. But again, the idea is we have to move towards implementation.
You've, you're absolutely right to pick it up and to remind us that we need to, to move on that. I do think that we've had a lot of work to get this project together, and then, you know, hopefully we get past that.
Absolutely. So, you know, a forefront in my mind is we have a steam leak this year. To think that that's the only steam leak is not.
Good point.
So...
I have an estimate for you, I have an estimate for these, for, like an estimate...
An estimate to make an estimate.
An estimate to make an estimate.
Gotcha.
So what do we need to do?
That's like geometric.
What do we need to do as a board to get the committee started?
Authorization.
Authorization.
It sounds like a subcommittee to me.
So can we take action at this point?
You cannot take action because it hasn't been more than discussion, but you can take action next month.
Um, could it, could it, ad hoc committee be meeting in the interim?
Absolutely. Please.
It's actually a little flexibility because we don't have a meeting until the 27th of May after this break, which is, which is almost unheard of.
Took so long? So we don't have to do anything now? We're going to have an ad hoc committee meeting?
You got to put it on the agenda, yeah? You got to put it on the agenda for the 27th.
Right, I will make sure it goes on the agenda for the 27th. Change Joanne a lot, make sure that...
In the meantime, Jeff is going to, going to form a committee so that it can be formally appointed then.
Okay.
And I will reach out to Kurt and see if he will...
That'd be awesome. That's awesome. Thank you. Again, thanks for bringing it up, Jeff. Anything else on the facilities, we, building committee meeting, building committee discussion? All right. Shall we go into executive session? Is there any, you, you guys are okay over there?
How long are you thinking we need?
Um, Joanne, half an hour?
Not even a half an hour.
Fifteen minutes?
It's sometimes takes longer than expected.
No, we're doing pretty good, I do.
Someone, you know, we're on executive session. I'm willing to be, if the board goes into executive session.
Or discussion.
That's impossible.
All the others just have to get through.
Second.
All those in here?